Ms. Williams. Mayor Anderson. Mr. Magner.
President.
Ms. Shulist.
Here.
Mr. McDonald.
Here.
Mr. Calley.
Here.
Mr. Pape. Mr. King.
Here.
Thank you very much. Feel free to join me tonight for our opening prayer and pledge.
My father, I thank you for being a part of my life. I ask tonight for your wisdom and guidance. May we make good decisions and appreciate our neighbors. In your son's name, I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Calley Shulist. Ms. Howe, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Schilling.
Aye.
Ms. Williams. Mr. Magner.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Thank you. Do we have any citizens' comments this evening?
None.
None, thank you. Next on the item of agenda here is approval of amendments. Do I hear a motion? Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. McDonald, Calley. Ms. Howe, would you please call the vote?
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Schilling.
Aye.
Mr. Magner.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Abstained.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Thank you. We have no items of old business. We'll move into new business tonight. First item is PC Resolution PC 36-24, rezoning of 7103 Wiley Circle. This is a 1.27 acres portion of MAP 42H. Group C parcel eight. Current zoning is C1. Property owner Wiley Circle Investments. We'll first hear from the staff report and then I'll entertain a motion to discuss. Mr. Greer, please.
Mr. Tim Mangrum has submitted a request to rezone a 1.27 acre portion of the 5.6 acre parcel located at 7103 Wiley Circle. The property is currently zoned C1 commercial. The properties to the east are zoned commercial general. The properties to the south and west are zoned RS40, single family. And the properties to the north are zoned RS40, single family, and R21 and two family. The Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates this property as commercial center. The commercial center notes the appropriate land use as retail, restaurant, office, light industrial, multifamily as part of a mixed-use development, and civic institutional. The commercial center classification lists two zone districts as appropriate zoning, and those zone districts are commercial center and OPS districts with changes to achieve the intent of the policy. The commercial community district and OPS office professional services districts are no longer included within the Fairview zoning ordinance. The property is larger in size at 5.6 acres and is unique in that it has double road frontage on Fairview Boulevard and Wiley Circle. This rezoning request is desiring to rezone the northern portion of the parcel that has road frontage along Wiley Circle, which is a roadway that serves as a residential area. Although not aligned with the 2040 plan, this rezoning request holds merit in that it will require the parcel to be subdivided, which will provide the potential to create an area of development adjacent to each of the road frontages for this parcel. This rezoning would permit a residential type of development along Wiley Circle that is a residential street, and the remaining portion of the parcel can be developed commercially to match the development pattern of Fairview Boulevard. A benefit of this rezoning would be the removal of a potential commercial access point onto Wiley Circle, which is currently a residential street. An additional benefit of this rezoning and the subsequent subdivision would be the elimination elimination of a commercial access point onto Wiley Circle. The applicant provided the following reason for the rezoning request: to keep Wiley Circle a residential street and create some separation from commercial and residential. Staff recommends that the planning commission provide a favorable recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to approve this request to rezone the 1.27 acre portion of tax map 042H, group C parcel 008, located at Wiley 7103 Wiley Circle, from the current zoning of C1 to residential, single family eight, with the following conditions of approval included in PC Resolution 36-24. The rezoning request will be placed on the Thursday, December 5th Board of Commissioners meeting agenda for consideration, with the potential for the public hearing and second reading being held at the Thursday, January 2nd, 2025, Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. First, can I entertain a motion on?
Make a motion to approve PC 3624.
Okay, Calley. Do I have a second? Second, Mr. McDonald. Thank you. And sir, I understand you'll represent the applicant tonight. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Tim Mangrum, 7326 Fernvale Road.
Thank you. Before we discuss, is there any additional commentary you'd like to add to the application?
I don't, I don't think so. This piece was, is a little challenging. It's, most of its Highway 100 frontage is very topography challenged. So with taking that into consideration and the fact that Wiley Circle is a residential street, we do, we are hoping and intending to keep the church building there. It's been there for a long time. Renovate that for some commercial use. So to give some separation from that commercial use and Highway 100, separating that Wiley Circle side off, just to give it some separation and disconnecting the current pass-through. There's access to this property, literally loops from 100 back around to Wiley. There's a drive there. And this, by doing this rezoning, that'll, that'll cut that commercial access off.
All right, thank you. We'll open it up for comments, questions from the planning commission.
Keith, could you go to the next slide? The applicant did submit with their application a conceptual plan of what they would like to do with the Wiley Circle piece of the property, and that would be to subdivide it into six single-family home sites.
Yeah, thank you for that addition there, Mr. Greer. Of course, it's the recommendation to the Board of Commissioners with this. It's really just a zoning, but I do appreciate the intent. Correct me if I'm wrong. Originally, was this going to be the indoor storage facility property? Is that correct? And that's no longer being pursued?
There was, there was an applicant prior that had submitted for a commercial mixed-use zoning on this property, and the Board of Commissioners denied that request.
Yeah, thank you for that reminder. Comments, questions from the planning commission?
As a member of this board and also, I guess, as someone who lives in that area, much like a couple other properties in that vicinity that have become neglected over the years, for lack of a better phrase. I think, I think most people in the area would, would be pleased with this. I, I walk Wiley Circle pretty regularly with my family. I think there's real merit in the removing the commercial access to where whatever that building does eventually become, you don't have additional traffic in that area. Everyone that's using that road, Wiley Circle's pretty closed off to the rest of the, of the infrastructure far as roads go in the area. You're not going to have any traffic pulling in there that isn't aware that it's a family residential area, so I think it's a safe bet. That's all I have.
Shulist?
As part of the rezoning, I heard mention that there was plans to subdivide the commercial frontage from the residential. Is that part of this, or is that a future subdivision of the parcel?
So the whole parcel runs from Wiley Circle all the way down to Highway 100. The piece that Mr. Mangrum is seeking to rezone is only the frontage that is shown here on Wiley Circle. The rest would remain as commercial one, C1 zoning. And so with this piece being, this 1.27 acres being rezoned along Wiley Circle, he could then subdivide that to accomplish his goal of having six single-family lots, and then remain, the commercial piece would remain along the Highway 100 frontage.
And the commercial would still remain in the ownership of this same group?
Mr. Mangrum, I believe.
Yeah, so when we submitted this application, that this property was owned by Wiley Circle Investment. We have, we actually closed on the property last week, so we own it. But yes, the, the commercial aspect, we intend to retain.
Gotcha.
I hear no other comment. Thank you, Mr. Mangrum. Ms. Howe, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Schilling. Mr. Magner.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Motion to approve passes seven to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is PC 37-24. This is a variance request from subdivision regulations for Liberty Road, which is 18.91 acres. MAP 69 parcel 79.02. Current zoning is RS40. Property owner, Garen and Kim Wright. Mr. Greer, would you first read your staff report?
The current owners, Garen and Kim Wright, would like to subdivide the property they own into two separate parcels. The property is located north of Liberty Road and west of Valley Road and is identified as tax map 69 parcel 79.02. The property is zoned RS40, single-family residential, and contains a total of 18.91 acres. The property is currently two different tracts of land, but only having a single tax map and parcel identification number. The southwest tract of land has road frontage along Liberty Road and contains 10.18 acres. The northeast tract of land has no road frontage and contains 8.73 acres. Currently, there is an existing 30-foot wide ingress egress easement that permits access from the southwest portion of the property to the northeast portion of the property. The existing ingress egress easement was existing at the time of the current owners purchased the property. The easement does cross the properties to the south, tax map 69 parcel 80.01, which is owned by Wayne Michael Hooper. To comply with the required 50-foot wide access easement requirement, the current owners have spoken with the Hooper family about widening the existing easement. However, the Hooper family does not wish to grant an expansion to the easement. The current owners have also spoken with the property owner located to the north, tax map 69 parcel 78.01. Although the current easement does not cross the property to the north, the current owners have tried to expand the easement to the north. However, that property owner does not wish to grant the easement across their property either. The current owner desires, desires to subdivide the parcel into two separate parcels with two unique tax map and parcel numbers. Given that the northeast tract does not have road frontage, access will have to be provided through the existing access easement. Given the current owner's inability to negotiate an expansion, widening of the access easement to 50 feet, they have submitted a variance request per the standards found in section 1112 of the Fairview Subdivision Regulations. The standards of variance, section 1112 of the Fairview Subregs, provides for four standards for the planning commission to consider when reviewing variance requests. The four standards and related information is listed below in our staff report. Granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public's safety, health, or welfare, or be injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood where the property is located. The applicant's response, quote, "Our intent is to subdivide the property into two parcels. We are not planning any changes or development that would be detrimental to the public's safety, health, or welfare, or be injurious to the neighbors." Staff, if approved, the variance would not be detrimental to public's safety, health, or welfare due to the 30-foot wide access easement is an existing condition and has been provided access to the northeast portion of the property for years. Item two, conditions upon which the request for variance is based are unique to the property for which the variance is sought and are not applicable generally to other property. Applicant's response, quote, "The conditions under which the variance is requested are unique because our property was part of a larger parcel that was previously subdivided, leaving a portion of the property with no access." Russell and Peggy Spicer quit claimed a portion of the property to, to the north of the subject property of this request to the Liberty Hill Church of Christ in 2014. The parcel that was quit claimed to Liberty Hill Church of Christ has frontage on Highway 100. This transaction left a section of the property that we own landlocked. We were told by the previous City of Fairview planning manager that the existing easement could be used to access the portion of our property that is landlocked. However, when our engineer assessed the project, he brought to our attention the issue with the required 50-foot easement. The GIS map for this parcel is incorrect. The section of the parcel that fronts on Liberty Road and the section to the north do not intersect, which creates a landlocked parcel. The GIS map shows that the two sections are connected. The property has a single PIN, but two completely separate parcels. We've been unable to reach an agreement with the neighbors to widen the existing 30-foot easement. Staff, in response to, would the condition only apply to this piece of property? The requested variance would not be applicable to properties whether adjacent or in other areas of the city due to the request being based on the existing 30-foot wide ingress egress easement present on this property and the unique property boundaries for this parcel. Item three, because of the particular physical surroundings, shapes, or topographical condition of the specific property involved, a particular hardship not self-imposed to the owner would result, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience, if the strict letter of these regulations were carried out. Applicant response, without this exception, the section of the property to the north, about 8.7 acres, has no access if we were to subdivide the property. Staff, this variance request is not self-imposed in that the existing ingress egress easement was established by previous owners of the property and not the current owners. Additionally, the property, tax map 69 parcel 7902, is physically unique in that the property is divided into two tracts, but only has one tax map and parcel number for identification. The tract of land to the northeast is landlocked with no access without the ingress egress easement. Item four, the variance will not in any manner alter provisions of the land development plan, the major thoroughfare plan, or the Fairview zoning ordinance. Applicant response, our intent is to subdivide the parcel into two parcels, a minor subdivision. This should not impact the land development plan, the major thoroughfare plan, or the Fairview zoning ordinance. Staff, the variance request, if approved, will not alter any provisions or regulation found in the Fairview 2040 plan, the current major thoroughfare plan, or the Fairview zoning ordinance. The requested variance is from the subdivision regulations and not any other city regulation. The reason for the request, the applicant owner provided the following justification for variance requests as required on the application. The back piece of our property, which contains approximately 8.73 acres, is currently accessed via a 30-foot easement. We would like to subdivide the property for a minor subdivision into two parcels, the front being one parcel and the back piece being its own parcel. They do not connect today. However, the easement that is required is now 50 feet. We have asked both neighbors, Hooper and Sullivan, if they would allow us to widen the existing easement by 20 feet. Neither neighbor would agree to widening the easement. We feel hardship exists due to the fact that the back piece should have its own PIN. Anyway, given that it does not connect to the front piece and would be landlocked without the use of the existing easement, staff recommends the planning commission approve the variance request from section 1113.107 of the Fairview Subdivision Regulations to permit the use of an existing 30-foot wide access easement, which is a 20-foot reduction from the required 50-foot access easement as resubmitted on October 29th, 2004. 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. First, do we hear, can I have a motion? Motion to approve. That, McDonald? Do we have a second?
Second.
Calley, thank you. Do we have a representative tonight for this application? Good evening, sir. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Hi, my name is Garen Wright. I live at 918 Stewart Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Any additional commentary you'd like to add before we discuss?
That, that covers it, but I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Okay. So I will open it up for discussion. Comments, questions from the planning commission?
Are you looking for more from me?
Not yet, sir.
Okay.
I was, I'll, I'll start with a quick question. So yes, this particular exhibit, which is very helpful, thank you for zooming in as well. The, it does represent slightly different from, from the previous map. So that current easement that we're seeing, that is currently only 30 feet. Is that correct?
Right. That's correct. The small pink portion, I know it's hard to see. I tried to get it as clear as I could to get it up on the screen, but the small pink piece that cuts across Mr. Hooper's property to the southeast is the easement that it currently exists, and it is 30 feet wide.
So the easement does encroach though on the neighboring adjacencies, correct?
The easement does cross Mr. Hooper's property, currently.
Okay.
And it's an existing road right there?
Where would you be speaking, Ms. Shulist?
Where the pink is. Is it a road?
It is a current driveway.
Driveway.
That accesses that back portion.
With a review and approval tonight, I don't think we can determine or dictate the use of the back parcel. So to approve the easement by no mean has any impact on how you use that. It would be nice to know, though, the intention. You know, if that were to be developed, where it could provide several houses, you know, that'd be quite a bit of traffic that we're going to pass between two existing neighbors, which would, in my opinion, create a little bit of a unfavorable neighboring condition. Do you, do you personally have any intention of the use of that property?
No, we're just looking for a minor subdivision to create two, two lots and potentially at some point build a house on each lot.
Sir.
Mr. Chairman, I think you already kind of pointed it out, but approving the variance for, is only to the subdivision, so any future development would still be subject to the requirements for whatever they bring forward for a development plan. And if it requires significant access, they'll probably need more than a 30-foot easement anyway. So I think the 30-foot easement limits what could be developed back there.
Oh, thank you. That's, that's helpful clarification. I will add, this is extremely unique. That doesn't necessarily have a pro or con impact. Well, it could have a con impact to the neighbors, but I, I know recently it's kind of challenging here in the city where we allow a tight easement for a heavier development in, in smaller residential environments. I'm not so sure in this case that, that, that would happen, because I certainly would not be favorable if we were going to dump a lot of traffic next to some existing homes. Other thoughts, comments from the planning commission? Mr. McDonald?
Just for clarification, when you say you're subdividing into two lots, is those two pieces, though they look currently like two, it is considered one on, on paper? Which that's what we're doing, is subdividing those two into separate. And this, what's the linear foot of that easement roughly? Do you know, like how far that actually goes on someone else's property?
Well, it's, much of the easement is on our existing property.
That pink box, though, I mean, it's like probably 50 feet, I'm guessing. It's a very small, if that.
Oh, yeah. Very small.
To me, this seems like just a guy trying to access his land. Think it's, you know, as far as the impact on the City of Fairview goes, I don't think it's going to have, have much of it, so.
The surrounding pieces are in the county.
Yeah. That's all I have.
I think that's a good point, Mr. McDonald. That's kind of what I was alluding to, trying to be fair to everybody, to this property owner as well as the neighbors. If that was going to be a, a major subdivision with a lot of traffic, I definitely wouldn't be in favor of that. But I think you should be able to access your own north tract there. Additional thoughts, comments? Thank you, Mr. Wright. Ms. Howe, would you please call the vote?
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Schilling. Mr. Magner.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero to approve the variance request. Next item on the agenda, item number three, which is PC Resolution PC 38-24. This is a final plat, Cedar Crest Phase One, MAP 42, parcel 125. Current zoning is commercial general. Property owner, Meritage Homes. We'll first hear from Mr. Greer. If you would, please read your staff report.
T Squared Engineering has submitted on behalf of Meritage Homes a final plat for Phase One of the Cedar Crest subdivision. The Cedar Crest subdivision contains a total of 137 townhouse units on 27.57 acres. Phase One of the subdivision contains 48 of the 137 total units on 8.02 acres. Phase One will also create three new public rights of way that will be named Cedar Crest Lane, Cedar Crest Way, and Cedar Crest Court. All three of these rights of way are 50 feet in width. That matches the city requirement for residential roadway. Cedar Crest Lane will connect to Fairview Boulevard, Highway 100, and connect to all future phases of the subdivision. Phase One will also create three open spaces and one detention pond. Open space one and two are completely located within Phase One, while open space three will be in both Phase One and Phase Two. Surrounding land uses and zoning, the two properties to the north are zoned RS40. The properties to the east are zoned R20. The properties to the south are zoned RS40 and R20. Properties to the west across Fairview Boulevard is zoned RS40, single-family residential. While one parcel is located between the development and Fairview Boulevard, and that parcel is zoned commercial general. Two of the surrounding parcels contain single-family detached residential land uses, while all other adjacent properties are currently vacant. The Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates the parcel that contains the Cedar Crest subdivision Phase One as Town Center. The Town Center classification notes the appropriate land uses are single-family detached residential, single-family attached residential, multifamily residential, retail, restaurant, office, and civic institutional. The Town Center classification lists the Town Center Mixed Use Zone District with changes to achieve the intent of the policy as the only appropriate zoning for properties within this classification. This property is zoned commercial general and utilized the RM8 construction standards. Staff recommends the planning commission approve the final plat for Phase One of the Cedar Crest subdivision in order to create 48 multifamily units, create three new public rights of way, create one detention pond. rights of way, create one detention pond, and create three open spaces and install all stormwater, water, and wastewater infrastructure as resubmitted on October 29, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. May I hear a motion on PC 3824?
Make a motion to approve PC 3824.
Callie? Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Schulus?
Sean.
Sean, I'm sorry. Do we have a representative tonight, sir? Would you please state your name and address?
My name is Louis Sloyan with T-Square Engineering. The address is 111 Southeast Parkway Court.
Thank you, sir. Do you have any additional commentary you'd like to add?
Nothing additional, but I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have it.
All right, thank you. So we'll open it up for comment discussion from the planning commission. This is final, correct?
Yes, sir.
Hearing no comments, questions from the planning commission? All right, thank you, sir. Ms. Howe, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Schulus?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Motion to approve passes seven to zero for item PC 38-24. Next item, number four on tonight's agenda, PC 39-24 Development Plan, Chester Road Town Homes. This is a 17.23 acre Map 42 Parcel 142. This is currently zoned RM 8, and the property owner is Phillips Builders. Mr. Greer, would you please read your staff report for PC 3924?
John Richard Patterson with Kim Lee Horn has submitted on behalf of Phillips Builders a residential development plan for the Chester Road Town Homes development. The project is a multifamily residential development that consists of 114 townhomes, three private rights of way, two stormwater ponds and infrastructure, one open space, and all necessary utilities, infrastructure. The parcel Tax Map 42 Parcel 142 is zoned RM 8 multifamily. The property is located on two FEMA firm panels. There is a flood hazard area, Zone AE, located along the eastern boundary of the property. Also, there is a floodway located along the southern boundary, or along Chester Road. No physical element of the development is located within the floodway or Zone AE. The development is proposing cut and fill within the floodplain according to city standards. The Chester Road Town Homes development contains 114 townhome units, three private rights of way, two stormwater ponds, and a playground. The townhome units consist of 53 two-bedroom units, 61 three-bedroom units. All three-bedroom townhomes have two parking spaces, one within a garage and one in the driveway. Parking for all two-bedroom units is provided in surface parking areas adjacent to the The properties to the north are zoned RS 40 and commercial general. The properties to the south across Chester Road are zoned RS 40, single-family residential and CG commercial general. All properties to the east are zoned RS 40, single-family residential. All properties to the west are zoned CG commercial general. The land use on properties to the north, east, and southeast is single-family residential. The land use on properties to the south and west is commercial. The Fairview Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan designates the parcel that contains the Chester Road Town Home development as Legacy Neighborhood Residential Medium. The Legacy Neighborhood Classification notes that the appropriate land use is single-family detached residential, and the classification lists two zone districts as appropriate, RS 40 and R 20. The current property zoning is RM 8 multifamily residential. This zone district, although not in alignment with the listed zone districts, is in place, and the multifamily dwelling land use is a permitted land use. Staff recommends the planning commission approve the Chester Road Town Home residential development plan to construct 114 townhomes, three private rights of way, two stormwater ponds, and infrastructure, one open space, and all necessary utilities, infrastructure as resubmitted on October 25, 2024, with the condition of approval included in Resolution PC 3924, the approval of a pedestrian bridge design for the Chester Road sidewalk.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Can I hear a motion for item PC 3924?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Donald Schulus, thank you. Sir, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, sir. Good evening. John Richard Patterson with Kim Lee Horn, 4031 Aspen Grove, Franklin, Tennessee.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Any additional commentary you'd like to add?
Sure. So this is the, pretty much the exact same plan that came through for master development plan earlier this year, with the exception of we've added the sidewalk that was conditioned all the way to Fairview Boulevard, all the way to the edge of our property.
All right, we'll open up for comments, questions from the planning commission.
One of the items in our regulations and that we had spoke about at the time of the master development plan coming through is that the planning commission sought to review and approve the bridge design where they're spanning across the floodway. Keith, if you'll go to the next page. The bridge design was laid out in the drawing set with their details and wanted to make sure that all of you had a chance to look at that and that we had consensus on the design of the bridge from the planning commission.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Greer. I'll start with a couple of questions, since I'm not hearing any yet. Mr. Patterson, could you help understand, because I didn't see it? I think per this development type, we're supposed to have a six-foot privacy fence. I did not see that on this particular package. Is that included?
We do not, a six-foot privacy fence between units? This is a single development.
At the perimeter of the boundary line.
We do not have one. I'm not aware of that requirement.
All right, I might get the staff to help double-check me on this, but this falls under multifamily dwelling requirements, Section 7101, which states that in order to provide reasonable, visible, and acoustic privacy, there must be a six-foot in height fence at the boundary of the development site.
While they're looking that up, I believe we were held to attached home code requirements because we're townhomes, not necessarily multifamily.
This is, this is an RM district, so the only thing I have to go off from here is not discussions previously, other than what you're submitting for. So this falls under multifamily dwellings. So therefore, I can only look at this particular requirement. I'm specifically looking at 7-101, number four. Had we been in the town center, I think that would have been avoided. While they're looking up, I'll pose my second question, just to kind of help us on.
Yes, sir.
It further cross references us to Article 6, which indicates that there has to be a residential buffer yard. So this is 30 feet in width or depth, an obstruction. And so my only question would be, can we please go back to the site plan, sir? Thank you very much. I'm talking about the properties on what is on here, Plan West. They look to me like they are within a 30-foot separation. And this one, I'm specifically looking at 6-103.3G, as in golf. So that would be a special yards and setbacks along district boundaries, which again is cross-reference from the multifamily. To me, I think those are pretty big, personally. We have a higher-density property that's, I know on the west side, we're really backing up to commercial, but at the same time.
It does back up to commercial. There is a tree line there that's existing.
Yeah.
Again, I think when we went through the master development plan, the requirements for multifamily didn't necessarily apply to this development, so it was understood from us and planning that we were following attached townhome code, and I don't recall that requirement. So if it was approved in the master development plan with this separation, does that change this requirement, I guess?
Mr. Greer, do we have any documentation that states somehow this property has a variance that allows them to look at single detached versus multifamily dwellings?
There were several exceptions that were asked for during their master development plan, but that was not a variance or an exception that was asked at that point.
Other comments, questions from the planning commission?
I'll provide a little bit of clarity on the multifamily versus attached dwelling, as he's speaking of. You're correct. So Article 7 does have supplemental design regulations for multifamily as well as attached dwellings. So Article 7-103 Development Standards for Attached Dwellings, this is actually, says provisions set forth herein are intended to apply to all attached dwellings as defined by this ordinance. Unfortunately, there's no actual definition in the ordinance of, other than in this paragraph says whether such units are properly described as townhomes or atrium homes. And so this being a townhome development, we did review this under the attached dwellings and not the multifamily dwelling requirements, which would be 7-102, I believe, 101. But I think that's, that's from your perspective, and then what he's saying as far as it being reviewed as attached dwellings versus multifamily. Obviously, it is multifamily in the sense there are multiple units in each building. However, there is nowhere in the definitions Article 2 that delineates between condos, townhomes, atrium homes, and the only, the only place it has any type of definition is in what I just read here in 7103. And so it was when staff reviewed it and we went through, I believe we actually began reading it or reviewing it under multifamily, and then as we read under attached dwellings, we realized this is actually where specifically townhomes are listed. And that's where, this is actually where we came in, and we reviewed it under 7103, not 7101, so.
That helps, and I definitely don't want to go against all of the work.
Yeah, yeah. So apologies for the confusion, but.
But that clarification's helpful.
Yeah, so part of it is the ordinance, part of it's the lack of a definition, and when staff found this, it's when we kind of switched our review process.
But we have a precedence of setting that was applied that we need to preserve. All right, thank you very much. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. King?
I just got a quick question for the staff. I just want to confirm that the 24-foot roadway with a five-foot sidewalk on either side is in compliance with the subdivision standard. It, for some reason, I mean, just even going back to the last item we were on with the 50-foot right of way, I know this is a private right of way, but it just seems small to me. I was trying to find where the design standard was, but was unable to find it earlier.
I'll make note that the pavement width is 21 feet, is that correct?
24.
I thought it was 10 and a half foot lanes, and then you had.
So it looks like that's all the way to the backside of gutter.
Correct. Yeah, the dimension, and it could be an incorrect dimension, but I measured it believing to scale.
Yes, so there is gutter on one side of the road, and it's face curve to face curve, yes.
Okay. Was it the intent to have the pavement 24 feet in width, or the 21 feet?
No, it was, the intent was 24 feet. So I mean, if that's contentious, we can remove the gutter and do post curve.
That may be contentious as well. I had to double-check on that. I think, I think curb and gutter is required.
On a private street.
Right. But you guys are doing HPR?
Yes.
The applicant submitted this same plan for their master development plan. At the time that we were going through our review processes in that, the roadways, in this case, because it is a sole development without a subdivision of the property, is a one-whole parcel that is remaining one whole parcel. This property falls into joint access, and so these roadways are actually accessways. They're not roadways. And so with that, you would have aisle and parking spaces, and so they do have to be built from a design aspect of the roadway construction, has to be built to the subdivision regulations standard. But the width of the roads, there are several different varying options, and joint access driveways are a minimum of 15 feet wide, and these are above that minimum.
Yeah, thank you.
Can you just remind us for the pedestrian bridge, is that over the entire wetland, or is it just over that creek body?
It is just over the creek, just, so where the blue hatching comes down and crosses the street. It is a very significant exercise to extend that pipe eight feet, and so we came before staff with discussions on a pedestrian bridge.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Not sure if this is a question, more just a comment. I guess it's more a question for clarity from staff, but we've had an application come before this board before, had, I feel like, a similar conversation around this, splitting hairs over, it's not, it's a private road, it's only accessing one property, it's not being subdivided into a lot, which on its face might be a fact, but at the end of the day, the intents and purposes of that access point, not everybody in there is one family living under one roof, it's a multifamily area. So I'm wondering, what do we have to do to get away from this issue? And that might be a discussion for the future, but it seems to me that that's, it just seems wrong to be able to classify it not being subdivided and then avoid, you know, just standard practice for what a street should look like in our town. And I know, again, it's a accessing an area with one in, one out, but it's a lot of traffic going through there, and, you know, garbage trucks and buses and whatever else might be. It just seems odd to not require that. And I don't know if, what can be done about that now, if there is anything that can be done. Staff, if you have any insight into that, great, would greatly appreciate some direction on that, but it just seems wrong. direction on that, but it just seems wrong.
Staff has recognized that this has been a point of contention. We've expressed and talked to our zoning ordinance contractor, TPUDC, to clarify our parking roadway construction and development standards in that regard. For this application in particular, they showed this exact, exact plan that's on the screen tonight, and in their application for this, at their master development plan, they have brought in a plan that is substantially, and I'm, ninety-nine point nine percent the same as their master development plan, and it was approved by this board a matter of months ago. And so I do know that that is an ongoing issue that we are working to resolve. In this case, if there is a condition or something that you would like to see changed as a planning commission, that is your prerogative.
Mr. Greer, also, can you remind me, I think when this came before us prior, there was discussions about additional access point up off to the plan north. I believe that, has that been resolved and determined not necessary?
You were asking about access point. The applicant, in conversation with them, spoke to the adjacent property owners, and there was no opportunity for them to have a secondary access point anywhere other than the property that they had to purchase for their access point on the southern side of this project.
But we have fire martial approval, don't we?
Yes, these are all sprinkled units. There are 114 of them per the fire code, they can have up to 200 sprinkled units on one access point.
All right, thank you for that reminder. Additional thoughts, comments, questions? All right, hearing that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Howe, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling? Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Item PC thirty-nine twenty-four passes seven to zero, approved. Next on the item, or the agenda, is item number five, PC resolution, PC forty dash twenty-four, residential development plan for Belvoir subdivision phase two. This is a fifty-one point ninety-one acre map twenty-one parcel sixty-two and map twenty-one parcel sixty-three. Current zoning is residential twenty, property owner Northwest Cove LLC. Mr. Greer, would you please read your staff report?
Allison Corolla with T-Squared Engineering has submitted a development plan for phase two of the Belvoir residential subdivision. The Belvoir development contains a total of eighty-one single-family detached residential lots within two phases. The property for phase two was rezoned to R twenty, one and two family residential at the July eighteenth, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting. Phase two contains fifty-four single-family residential lots on fifty-one point nine one acres. Phase two will create two new 50-foot public rights of way that will connect to a proposed extension of the existing Northwest Highway, which will be a 62-foot right of way. Phase two is also proposing a single 20-foot wide public right of way for an alley. The property for phase one is located on FEMA firm panel four one eight seven C zero one three five F, and no portion of phase two is located within the flood hazard area. The property to the north and west are phase one A, phase one B, and one C of the Belvoir development. Two properties to the south of Belvoir phase one are located within Fairview Municipal Boundaries and are zoned R twenty, one and two family residential. The other properties located to the south is located within Williamson County and is zoned MGA five. The properties to the east of phase two are also located within Williamson County and zoned MGA five. All surrounding parcels contain single-family residential land uses or are currently vacant. The Fairview Forward 2040 comprehensive plan designates this property as new residential medium neighborhood. The new residential medium neighborhood classification notes the appropriate land uses are single-family detached residential, single-family attached residential, limited to two-family houses, mixed-use commercial or office, multifamily residential, and civic institutional. All phases of the Belvoir subdivision development contain single-family detached residential units. Therefore, the proposed land use of phase two complies with the new residential medium neighborhood classification found within the Fairview Forward 2040 plan. Staff recommends the planning commission approve the Belvoir phase two development plan in order to create 54 single-family detached lots, create two new public rights of way, Belvoir Grove and Belvoir Loop, extend one public right of way, Northwest Highway, create one new public alley, create three open spaces, create three stormwater ponds, and install all necessary stormwater, water, and wastewater infrastructure as re-submitted on October 24th, 2024, with the condition of approval included in resolution PC forty twenty-four. The condition of approval is remaining staff comments to be addressed prior to the pre-construction meeting. Our city engineer noted three comments on the plan. We have asked for two notes to be added to the development plan, and then for the mailbox location to be reevaluated for the cluster box unit for this development.
Thank you, Ms. Greer. That was the new additional handout that was provided tonight, correct? With those conditional approvals?
That is not, that's for our last item on our agenda tonight.
Okay, because I did not see those conditions on the original.
It just has remaining staff comments to be addressed. I just wanted to let, there are only three comments. Two of them were notes to the developer that we would like to see added, the developer has been made aware of those notes and plans to add those to the development plan, and the cluster box location is one thing that we're working. USPS is also involved in working on solving where that location needs to go for their access as well.
Thank you for that clarification. Do I hear a motion for PC forty dash twenty-four?
I could read those notes before a motion is made, if needed. The, the three items that are conditions of approval.
I think Mr. Greer kind of covered those, did he not?
Not, not specifically, he didn't describe what they entail, but.
Please feel free to.
Sure. So to add the following note to the development plan, please note that there may be some areas of interest on particular lots that may require some additional common drainage paths across multiple lots in order to properly convey the runoff into proposed stormwater infrastructure. Those areas will be evaluated at the time of construction plans review. To note some of the lots, there were lots two twenty-three to two twenty-eight, two thirty to two thirty-two, two forty-two to two forty-four, and two oh eight to two oh nine. These areas have been identified per the submitted development plan, and additional areas could present themselves at the time detailed construction plans are submitted. The second note is that, to please be advised, staff understands that the developer desires to only permit the limits of disturbance on the development plan. If accurate, there will be a note required on the final plat that provides a statement similar to the following. Each individual lot will be required to provide notice of coverage under Tennessee MPDES construction stormwater permit prior to building permits being issued. And then the last one was the mailbox location was determined to be an unsafe location, and we were asking the applicant to consider revision to the location. Thank you.
Thank you for clarification. Do we have a motion, PC forty dash twenty-four?
Motion to approve?
Approve. McDonald, do we have a second?
Second.
Schilling, thank you. Do we have a representative tonight of this application?
Good evening, I'm Allison Corolla from T-Squared Engineering. We're located at 111 Southeast Parkway Court in Franklin. I'm here to answer any questions that you guys may have. I would like to clarify, one thing is, I believe the staff report says fifty-four lots, we are only proposing 53 additional lots. One other point of record that I would like to note is, the developer is requesting to eliminate the second condition, that is to require an NOC on each individual lot plan. In, after discussion with the city engineer last week, the developer and the city engineer have, have determined that we can provide additional grading on each one of the individual lots. As such, we will not require that individual NOC for each individual lot, as it will be included on the overall construction plan permit process. So we would just ask that that condition be removed.
Just to clarify, the condition is not to make that in this development plan. It's that if this is the, the path that the developer wants to, to take, that, that the note will be on the final plat, not, it will not be enforced in the development plan, just to make that.
Yes, sir, yep.
And it's only an if statement, it's, it's not a requirement?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So we'll open up for comments, questions from the planning commission. So I'll start us out. So if the final grading and drainage across multiple sites is required and contingent upon the final construction of each lot, what happens if the sequence of those lots does not fall within that drainage development, so that we end up with lot one that's not developed but yet is required for that proper drainage? To me seems a little haphazard.
That's a great question. So it will be included on our NOC. So we already have an NOC from the state, so our, our state disturbance permit, to permit exactly what is shown on the limits of disturbance that's shown on, on this page. We will update that to include that lot grading, and as such, we cannot close out that permit or receive city approval on permitting until that is completed.
It's just not on individual lots, is that correct?
Correct, it will be an overall subdivision lot for the lots that are specifically called out in that condition that, Mr. Robert.
Which in that case, I agree, I think that makes sense, otherwise, conditionally, you can't develop out of sequence, right? Thank you.
I think the, the intent of that is that it's one large NOC for the roadways as well as those particular lots of interest, rather than being 53 individual NOCs, that honestly, the state seldom permits disturbances under an acre anyway, so.
Thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Any additional comments, questions? I know we've looked at this development a few times, so it's fairly familiar. All right, thank, Ms. Corolla, thank you. Ms. Howe, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling? Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Callie?
No.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Howe. PC forty dash twenty-four passes six to one as approved. Next on the agenda, item number six, we have seven tonight, six will be PC resolution, PC dash forty-one dash twenty-four. This is a zoning ordinance amendment, exceptions to height regulations. So for this particular one, Mr. Greer, would you please help, excuse me, I guess this is coming from engineering, correct?
We're going to help Ethan out on this one, I'll read it.
Sounds great. So this is a request for an amendment to the zoning ordinance specifically related to exceptions to height regulations. The Fairview zoning ordinance contains exceptions to maximum height requirements in all zoning districts, whether residential, commercial, or industrial. Currently, height exception language is found in section six dash one oh two point one zero, section eight dash one oh three point three one, and section nine dash one oh three point three one. Each of these sections provide general information related to specific structure types that are permitted to exceed maximum height regulations as stated in all established zoning districts, whether residential, commercial, or industrial. In order to provide more specificity and clarity to which structure types are permitted to exceed height regulations found in all three types of zone districts, the planning department staff is proposing updates to the three sections within the zoning, within the Fairview zoning ordinance. Specific structures that have been added are domes, flagpoles, silos, grain elevators, which are currently not specified within, within these regulations. Additionally, the request is to add text that provides an exception to all land uses listed within the community facilities land use category in section three dash one and three point two of the zoning ordinance. Community facilities land use category is permitted within all types of zone districts, residential, commercial, as well as industrial. Community facilities land use category permits buildings and structures that are, that have a high likelihood of meeting the requirements for an exception to height regulations. These building structures include court buildings, fire department buildings, police departments, post offices, and other governmental office facilities. These updates will provide more specificity and clarity for both city staff while reviewing projects and for applicants as they are creating a project for submission. Within the staff report, it is stated that the proposed amendment is to remove all text in section six dash one oh two point one zero, section eight dash one oh three point three one, and section nine point one oh three point three one, and replace with the following text. It is provided on the second page of the staff report, and I'll, it is the exact same wording for each section, so I'll read one section. So section six dash one oh two point one zero, general exceptions to height regulations. The new text reads, "The maximum height regulations contained in all residential zone district bulk regulations shall only apply to, shall not apply to church spires, belfries, cupolas, domes, radio towers, flagpoles, water tanks, silos, grain elevators, ventilators, chimneys, or other appendatures usually required to be placed above the roof level of a building not intended for human occupation. Additionally, maximum height regulations contained in any residential zone district bulk regulation shall not apply to any land use found within community facilities activity classification as found in section three dash one oh three point two of the zoning ordinance." This exact language is also repeated in section eight, the only change being referencing commercial zoning instead of residential. Same text is used in section nine one oh three point three, again removing residential zone districts and it being related to industrial zone districts. I was recommending the planning commission provide a favorable recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to amend section six dash one oh two point one, general exceptions to height regulations, section eight dash one oh three point three one, section nine dash one oh three point three one, to provide clarity to permitted exceptions to height regulations, to provide height exception for all land uses within community facilities land use category as listed in section three dash one oh three point two.
Thank you very much for that. Before we discuss, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve PC forty-one twenty-four?
Motion to approve. Mr. Callie, do we have a second? Calling for a second motion to PC forty-one dash twenty-four. Ms. Schilling, thank you. We'll open this up for comment, questions from the planning commission. Did we have a specific condition that brought this on, that?
Mr. Chairman? I looked at this with Mr. Carter actually today, and the way he explained it to me, those, that specific verbiage and those specific exception, exceptions are pretty standard across most zoning codes, so the flagpoles, the church steeples, and then the government uses, those are pretty generally listed as a standard exception. Our code, as it's written, doesn't apply for that, so I'm sure our new code will address it, but this just kinda gets us up to speed for the time being.
Understood. Thank you for that. That's good enough. For me.
I feel like for, in defense of transparency, I'm sure it has to do with the recent item that was in front of the BOZA board, they got denied, but that's just a hunch. My question is, we have a whole rezoning rewrite, a whole zoning rewrite happening right now that's gonna be done. What was the timeline on that? Like, year, eighteen months, something like that?
We should be ready for adoption around July of twenty-five.
So without anything in particular that's pressing for this change, I just don't see why we have to make an adjustment to our zoning ordinances when we're about to receive a whole new rewrite. Couldn't we just include this in the future one?
We could include this in a, in the future rewrite. It is a option as we are looking, this pretty much just allows government use facilities such as schools, the rec center, any of the city of Fairview owned buildings, fire department, police department, the justice center that we're looking at next door, the fire department that would be going out on Highway ninety-six at Northwest Highway, and including the police department, the shooting range at the back of the park. It would include all of those type of facilities would be, would have an exception to the height regulations that currently exist. The current height regulation is thirty-five feet inside the city limits for all different structures except for the ones that had permitted uses prior, such as flagpoles and steeples of churches, non-occupiable spaces. And this would apply to all community-owned facilities. It is something that we'd be looking at as Williamson County schools, most of their high schools now are very close to that thirty-five foot limit. Several of them have gotten up to, you know, two, two and a half stories plus the additional piece of the roof, and so it is one piece in the future that this is going to come up, and it would likely be in our new code. And this was an opportunity, it was brought to our staff from other staff members within the city to present it to the planning commission to find out if that would be something that the planning would be in favor of before it goes to the board of commissioners to make their decision.
Does that suffice your question?
Yeah, I just, to me, I agree. I think everything you said is accurate. It's just, almost everything you mentioned isn't gonna be built prior to us receiving the new zoning ordinance. So I just don't see what, where the relevance of it falls, it's just kinda odd to me, but I guess that's the end of my questions.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McDonald. As a reminder, this is, will just be a recommendation to the board of commissioners who will have final voting power on this item. Additional comments, questions? Mr. King?
So as an exception to the thirty-five foot, is there any limit, limitations on this? I mean, outside of FAA?
No, there, how it is currently written, there is not a limit to the height for those type of facilities. It is limited to government use facilities and then along with the other items that are in there.
Tag on to Mr. King's question, do we need to have any additional input from the fire marshals regarding fall clearance and distance of buildings related to either distance to property lines, fire apparatus?
We could ask the fire department for their opinion on this and have that provided to the, to the board at their time.
Thank you. That'd just be my only other recommendation because we could be incurring some risk that might be counter to life safety. Additional thoughts, comments? Thank you, Ms. Howe. Would you please call the vote?
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Ms. Shilling? Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. Magnner?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Item PC forty-one dash twenty-four was approved, seven to zero, and will go to the planning commission for final reading and approval. Last item on the agenda, item number seven, which is PC forty-two dash twenty-four. This is a master development plan, Lake Road, Highway ninety-six Town Homes. This is a thirteen point forty-nine acre MAP twenty-two parcel seven, MAP twenty-two parcel one sixty-seven, MAP twenty-two parcel one seventy-eight point zero two, which is currently zoned RM eight. Property owner is Middle Tennessee Developers. Mr. Greer, would you please read your staff report for forty-two dash twenty-four?
Allison Corolla with T-Squared Engineering has submitted on behalf of Middle Tennessee Developers a master development plan for the Highway ninety-six Town Homes development. The development contains thirteen point four nine acres and is proposed to construct one hundred and four townhouse units, two hundred and fifty parking spaces, private roads, and seven point nine eight acres of open space. The Fairview zoning ordinance classifies the townhouse land use as an attached dwelling as stated, as stated in section seven one zero three, Development Standards for Attached Dwellings. Section seven one oh three one states that all attached dwelling development must submit a master development plan for review by the Fairview Planning Commission. The property is located on FEMA firm panel four one eight seven C zero one three five F, and no portion of the Highway ninety-six Town Home development is located within a flood hazard area. The Highway ninety-six Town Home development contains one hundred and four townhouse units within nineteen buildings and the required two hundred and eight parking spaces along with an additional forty-two guest parking spaces. The density of the development is seven point seven units per acre, or five thousand six hundred and fifty square feet per unit. The RM eight zone district permits eight units per acre, or five thousand four hundred square feet per unit. The development is providing a playground that is centrally located within the development adjacent to a guest parking lot and the clustered mailbox kiosk. The development also includes four private roadways with sidewalks provided on both sides of the roadways and connect the entire development. The property to the north is zoned RS forty, single-family residential. The properties to the south are zoned RSM forty, single-family residential. The properties to the east across Highway ninety-six are zoned, zoned commercial general and RS forty. The properties to the west are zoned R twenty, one and two family residential, and RS forty, single-family residential, and RSM forty, single-family residential. All properties, surrounding properties are located within the municipal boundary of Fairview. The land use found on properties to the north and east is currently single-family detached. The properties to the south and west are currently vacant. Fairview Forward twenty forty plan designates the parcel that encompasses the Highway ninety-six Town Home development as both transition corridor and legacy residential medium. The transition corridor classification notes the appropriate land uses are single-family detached, office, civic institutional, and the appropriate zone districts are RS forty and a new district that would permit the adaptive reuse of existing structures. The legacy residential medium classification notes the appropriate land use is single-family detached, and the appropriate zone districts are RS forty and R twenty. The property zoning of RM eight nor the proposed land use of attached dwellings is in alignment with the Fairview Forward plan. However, the property zoning has been in place prior to the adoption of the twenty forty plan. Therefore, the owner can develop the property as current zoned and the proposed land use of attached dwelling Town Homes is a permitted use within the RM eight zone district. Staff recommends the planning commission approve the Highway ninety-six Town Homes master development plan in order to create one hundred and four townhouse units within nineteen buildings with all required parking spaces, four private roadways, two stormwater ponds, open spaces, and all required stormwater, water, and sewer infrastructure as resubmitted on October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, with the conditions of approval included in resolution PC forty-two twenty-four. That, PC forty-two twenty-four, I made a correction to that resolution and laid it on the desk prior to the meeting. There were two exceptions that the applicant asked for. One, they are unable to meet their replanting requirement on their site as it is a heavily forested site, and so they are asking to be able to pay into the tree bank as a tree bank exception request. And then, as we go through the slides, we'll be able to evaluate their architectural design. They are seeking an exception from the seventy percent brick requirement from the City of Fairview Design Review Manual for the exteriors of these buildings. They've proposed hardy board and a combination of, of stone and brick and other materials, but they are seeking the exception from the seventy percent brick requirement. There are two open issues, and there is a condition of approval for remaining staff comments to be addressed. The two open issues are to identify the open space. Section seven one oh three six A of the City of Fairview zoning ordinance requires the open space within an attached dwelling development to meet the quality and improvement requirements found in section ten two oh seven point seven, provide information and or notes that indicate the open space meets the requirements found in ten two oh seven point seven. Staff reviewed this and believes, is in the belief that they are in compliance with all of our regulations. We are just asking for them to provide that note that shows that they are in compliance. And so, those are the only three conditions of approval. If you have any questions, Ms. Corolla is still here and is happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. Do we have a motion for forty-two dash twenty-four?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Mr. McDonald. Do we have a second? Ms. Shilling, thank you. Ms. Corolla, are you still, state your name and address for the record for this item as well, just?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Allison Corolla with T-Squared Engineering. We're located at one eleven Southeast Parkway Court in Franklin. I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have. I know, just kinda off the bat, based on my experience before this commission, I know one of the items of discussion primarily has been buffering. We are providing that thirty-foot landscape buffer with pretty intense tree replacement. However, as Mr. Greer alluded to earlier, we are requesting that exception to contribute to the tree bank because we cannot meet that fifty percent requirement. However, we are doing, we are planting just about every open space provided on the property that we can. And another thing that I'd like to mention is that we are providing an additional forty-two parking spaces. So this is in addition to all of the driveway spaces and the garage spaces. So these are provided in both off-street parking as well as on-street parallel parking. These are all private roadways, so will not have to be maintained by the city. However, they do meet all of the requirements of the city subdivision regulations.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
We'll open up for comments, questions from the planning commission. Mr. Chair? Mr. King?
I've got two quick questions. So it looks like per your landscape plan, while you're not able to meet the fifty percent replant, you're still maintaining the forty foot, every forty foot along the right-of-way?
Correct. Yes, sir.
As the city, okay. As the city's standard, okay.
And if you'll notice, actually, as shown on, on this sheet on two point oh, we're actually providing that tree just outside of that fifty-foot private access. He's meant, that was something that was kind of evolved from discussions with staff and a planning commission member, just to place that outside to eliminate issues with conflicts with utilities and things like that.
My second question to the staff, can you speak a little bit more on the exception for the seventy percent, seventy percent brick requirement? I guess, I could be mistaken. I thought that was for commercial buildings.
The seventy percent brick requirement falls within multifamily. This is a subset of multifamily as attached dwellings. And so that has been applied historically throughout Fairview. If you look at just about every development we have of townhouses, they're all brick townhouses. What you see on the screen up top is their proposed architectural look, and they are seeking a exception to not have to meet the seventy percent brick requirement.
I'd like to note as well that the exception is not to provide a blanket exception to the seventy percent, but to only allow for that clapboard or stone addition in lieu of that seventy percent brick requirement. I don't know if that helps.
I, I mean, it does. It is kind of, I know you say it's not a blanket, but it is a little bit of a blanket for just how it reads here. I know this is possibly somewhat speculative, but do we know in the rewrite of the zoning ordinance if that seventy percent is to remain part of what will be here as of July of twenty-six?
The seventy percent brick requirement for commercial and multifamily has been probably the most asked-for exception that has come before this planning commission since it has been put into the regulations. And that is definitely one item that we are looking at evaluating. Multiple other towns around us went to a seventy percent brick requirement about the same time, and just about all of them have greatly reduced that or changed the language from brick to masonry product and included hardy board within that masonry product list.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
The current exception does not tell us what the substitution is. It's just simply requesting the?
The, the only requirement is, is that they do seventy percent brick, so they are asking to not do seventy percent.
Right, exactly. So we, to your point, Mr. King, it could be vinyl if we provide this exception.
I believe that was provided in the exception letter, was to allow for hardy board specifically.
In the elevations, it, it doesn't say hardy board specifically. It says smooth board, which could be anything.
It, it's the same, it's, it's not vinyl.
It, in Ms. Corolla's letter, she states, "We are requesting an exception from section two one oh four point one, architectural design and building requirements of the City of Fairview Design Review Manual as it pertains to the seventy percent minimum brick coverage requirement. Please see the attached elevations, which we have on the screen, indicating the proposed materials for the Town Homes on this development. As listed in two one oh four point six, permissible building materials, hardy board is an acceptable material. The exception request is simply for a reduction of the seventy percent brick in order to accommodate additional hardy board facade."
Okay.
I don't know, maybe that can be added as condition. We're certainly open to adding that as a part of that condition. That, that was the intent all along.
Reducing it from seventy percent down to zero percent?
Potentially. We can also discuss adding potentially any skirting around, so brick or stone skirting around the, the bottom of the, of all the buildings.
Yeah, 'cause the darker hatch is not masonry on here. It's a?
And the elevations have a little table at the very top that says zero percent masonry.
Correct. Right. That's just something that we can provide when we come back for site development plan, if that's something that this commission wishes to impose.
I definitely think there needs to be a little bit more clear language of what, what the expectation is.
Mr. Chairman, listen to the discussion. The, the board might consider amending the resolution as it's currently presented.
as it's currently presented to add on as to number three. So exactly as it stated, but instead of and the architectural design and building 70% brick requirement to add in language, provided that a substitute material will be a masonry product approved by the planning staff. And I think that might cover your if you amend the motion.
We're certainly open to that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. McDonald. I would like to amend the amend the amend the motion to change the verbiage from third exception, exception from the City of Fairview Design Review Manual, architectural design and building 70% brick requirement, strike brick requirement and require and make have it say masonry product. Is that sufficient?
I might suggest a masonry product to be approved by planning staff at.
Masonry product to be approved by planning staff.
Because whether it's hardy board or some other product.
Yes, sir.
And just a question on Mr. McDonald's amendment. Is there any additional conversation about masonry skirting at the grade level? Does anybody have any additional thoughts, commentation?
Mr. Chair.
Mayor.
I just don't like I wouldn't want it to be the hardy completely. So you did mention that you're willing to consider a skirting of stone brick, something like that. So I think we probably ought to get detailed on this because I wouldn't want to see all of these buildings be just the hardy product.
Certainly. And Mayor, that that was the intention. Unfortunately, we just weren't able to receive any updated elevations, any revised elevations prior to tonight's meeting. However, that was the intention is that, you know, if if that's what the the commission wants, we're we're fully open and willing to do that. We want to make a product that, you know, Fairview's proud of and that that looks good.
So Mayor, do you have any additional thoughts on do we want to specify a height? Otherwise, skirting could be eight inches.
Ethan, do you have any thoughts on that with past?
You could always go to the bottom of the windows on the like on the lower elevation there. It's the rear of the building, you know, the water table of the.
Perhaps window sill or nearest masonry dimension. That way, we're not forcing them to cut. That's I think that's.
That sounds good.
I think that's pretty common.
I just think that would be a nice look rather than have it all hardy board all the way to the to the bottom.
Yes, ma'am.
Back to Mr. McDonald. I think you initiated the amendment. Do we do we need to clarify that further?
I don't know if it received a second. I think.
We haven't called for it yet. We're still discussing.
If you felt so inclined, I think you could just adjust your the language of your amendment now before it.
I'm not sure what needs to what needs to be adjusted. Masonry product would cover a lot of different things. It wouldn't hold them to only one particular product.
But we're requiring them, though, to keep masonry to grade at a minimum.
May I remove my motion? I'll let someone else make it.
You were really close, Mr. McDonald. All right. Do we have any other motions for amendment?
I'll make a motion to amend.
Mr. King.
Make a motion to amend comment three to read, exception from the City of Fairview Design Review Manual, architectural design and building 70% brick requirement. I guess strike 70% brick requirement and masonry up to bottom sill of lowest elevation of window. Is that where we're at?
That that sounds good.
All right. All right, do we? Ms. Howe, would you please call the vote? This is for the amendment to item number three requirement. Oh, sorry. Yes, you're correct. That was Mr. King. Do we have a second to Mr. King?
Second.
Mayor, thank you. All right, now, sorry. Ms. Howe, would you please call the vote? Thank you, Mr. Greer.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mr. McNer?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
Aye. All right. So that amendment passes 7-0. I will not reread it for the record. I'm sure it's listed in the minutes. Back to the original, we're still discussing to the approval of the master development plan. So since this also falls under RM multifamily, I'd have to raise the same question I did to the earlier applicant, that we should also then be required to have a six-foot privacy fence at the boundary? Do we need to revisit that as well? That I can tell you the section number, it would be 6-103.3G. Now, I know this is Town Homes, but maybe the other project had.
Yeah.
Unique conversation.
Yeah, this was reviewed the same way. So again, going back to that 7103, that's the only place in the zoning ordinance that has a definition for Town Homes, and it's specifically called as an attached dwelling. So therefore, staff reviewed it under attached dwellings.
Okay.
And the requirement we're talking about is under 7101.
And I understand with our current zoning, you know, hopefully that gets resolved here in July 2025.
I can guarantee you that it will be resolved.
Yeah, understood. Unfortunately, though, we have a number of developments coming through. Other comments, questions? Thanks, Ms. Corolla. Ms. Howe, would you please call the vote?
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Schilling?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Ms. Schulist?
Aye.
Mr. McNer?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries 4224. Thank you, Ms. Corolla.
Thank you.
We have no bonds or letters of credit. Now, moving on to reports from each department, we'll first start with the city planning staff. Any comments this evening?
Just wanted to remind you all that prior to the next planning commission meeting, which is December 10th, December 10th at 5:00 PM, prior to the meeting, we will be having a training session. We have Mr. Carter and Mr. Hogan in their office will be doing a Roberts Rules of Order training along with several other legal aspects of the of the planning commission and board of commissioners. This will be a training that is available for planning commission, board of commission, and voting board of zoning appeals. So all three of our voting boards will be able and invited to attend this training. It should be really fun. Mr. Hogan, I think, has been hard at work getting everything ready. So we're always available. If you have any questions, feel free to to let us know. And thank you all for your diligence in going through and reviewing all of these items. I know that there were several. Right now, it looks like we will have three items on the December agenda, so it should be a little bit shorter of a list to get through in December.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Quick question on that before we move on to manager. The city provided several, well, a copy to each planning commission meeting member before on the Roberts Rules. I think it was the Roberts Rules for Dummies. It would be nice if we could get some additional copies for any new members.
They've been ordered.
They've been ordered. Thank you. Okay, that answers my question. Mr. McDonery, city manager.
Thank you. I just want to add to what Ethan said. We were trying to record all the trainings we have so we can use them in the future. But if for some reason you can't be here, reach out to Ethan and we'll let you know how to view that. Also, just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. City engineering?
Just want to echo what Tom said. And if you ever have any questions for engineering staff, we're always available, email, phone, whatever you guys need to continue to do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. City attorney, Mr. Hogan.
Just quickly on the training, I probably wouldn't describe it as fun, but we'll try to make it informative. The the Roberts Rules will be pretty quick. We want to talk about the the roles and responsibilities of each board and the different standards of review that they employ. So that's a topic. And then Mr. Carter is specifically going to discuss vested development rights. And if there's anything else that you'd like to know, or you'd like to be discussed of the training, please let me know. I'll sign Mr. Carter after that. He'll look forward to it.
Thank you. Last item is planning commission roundtable. So just following the typical order we've been doing for a number of years, starting at my left, Mr. McDonald, do you have any comments this evening?
Thank you, sir. Not many. I guess that was a little bit of a shock to realize that we're wishing each other happy Thanksgiving already and one meeting left in the year. It's just wild. Pee Wees Titans football here in town is playing in McEwen at 2:00 PM on Saturday for the Super Bowl in their division, five, six, and seven-year-olds. I know it sounds like it's five, six, and seven-year-olds playing football. It's like herding cats, but it's not. It's extremely fun to watch. So anybody who is is free, those kids would love to have a full crowd and support and support for them. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks. When was that again, Mr. McDonald?
2:00 PM, McEwen High School, Saturday.
Thank you. Mr. Calley? Just thank you to the staff and everybody have a great Thanksgiving. Thank you, sir. Ms. Schulist?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Mr. King?
Yeah, just to echo what everybody said. I really appreciate the staff, their hard work and their knowledge to answer our our somewhat basic questions. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. Ms. Schilling?
Nothing.
Thank you. Miss Mayor?
Just thank you to the staff for all your hard work. Remember, the Around Town Coffee is tomorrow morning, 8:30 at Anytime Fitness. I believe we're having a presentation from Richard Ross tomorrow. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone, since the next meeting we have will be after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. My only comment tonight, in addition to echoing appreciation for all of our staff, continues to be a growing community. I just want to say congratulations to the new board of commissioners and looking forward to their service to our our community and like to encourage the community to also remain engaged and let your voices be heard as as we're all in this together. That said, we all entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Mr. Calley, thank you.